Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. Well, first move to approval of the minutes of the meetings held eight, nine, 2021, our retreat, and that was in another meeting, I think, that day. So do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, same thing. The minutes are approved. We have five people on non-agenda items wishing to address the board. The board policy is 15 minutes total. So with five, you'll each get three minutes total. Kate here will time you and give you a one minute and a 30-second warning when your time is up. Each person who is assigned that three minutes, that's your three minutes. You can't pass it on and so forth. So we will start with Eric Rodal. Rodal?
Rodal.
Say Rodal. Thank you. And you can just step up to the microphone, same your name and address, and then your time start, okay? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Rodal. My address is 2029 South Abbey Stone Court, Sioux Falls, 57110. All right. Tonight, I'm here as a concerned parent of an elementary age student. I'm here in support of changing the Continue to Learn language concerning masking in school from encouraged to expected. Over the past month, COVID-19 cases have increased significantly in our county, and we know that mask wearing is an effective and simple way to slow down this disease. I ask you to follow the CDC recommendation of universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, and students, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. Mask wearing will make returning to school safer for our students, faculty, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next move to Rachel Rodal, please. State your name and address, too. Thank you.
Yep. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. My name is Dr. Rachel Rodal. My address is 2029 South Abbey Stone Court, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57110. I am a double-board certified obstetrician-gynecologist and maternal fetal medicine specialist. I take care of COVID patients, complicated pregnant women here in Sioux Falls, and consult for the multi-state area for many physicians regarding this issue. Tonight, I'm here representing myself and my family. Unfortunately, as I walk in this building, it is very apparent where everyone stands with their biases about the CDC and the AAP recommendations. It is very disappointing to see that those who are not experts are not following those with trained education in epidemiology and public health. Today, I am here to support masks expected for staff, students, and limit unnecessary people into contact with our vulnerable students. All I am asking is for us to have the same plan as last year. For our students 12 and under, and for those whose parents choose not to vaccinate them, this year is a higher-risk situation than last year. As we know, the Delta variant is highly contagious and has risk for higher hospitalization. Those students under 12 are very vulnerable, and I'm asking you to protect them. It also protects our staff, who are also vaccinated if they so choose, as well as our community, and the burden to our public health. While I know this is an unpopular decision, as you look around the room, there are very few people wearing masks. This is a challenging school year for our parents. It adds an additional amount of stress for many families. We need our leaders to make educated decisions. We need them to make an unpopular choice in this community. We need to follow the expert guidelines in this community. As a physician, it's my role to follow those guidelines that people with more expertise make, and I ask you to do the same. I also encourage you to think outside the box. I've communicated with my school's principal to consider grouping those with similar risk tolerance. If this is not something you're willing to do about masks, allow students whose families choose vaccines, choose masks, go with teachers who are vaccinated, to support the students in wearing masks and allow other classrooms to be otherwise. I also ask to reopen enrollment in the Virtual Learning Academy because when that decision was made and that deadline was there, we did not know that our school board would go against CDC and AAP guidelines. So we didn't know that our school district would be making that unfortunate decision. I value our students' safety and the education of the experts. Please, let's learn from those ahead of us in the South with raging infection rates, closures, and many quarantines to limit unnecessary illness enclosures. We're closer than ever, and these students will hopefully be vaccinated by Christmas, and we can let this all be behind us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Elliot Rodal. Thank you. Thanks for coming, though, Elliot. We appreciate it. Next is Carolyn Gilbertson.
Hello. I'm Carolyn Gilbertson. I'm from 5415 South Seerut Circle, Sioux Falls, 57108. I'm a parent to two elementary students in the district and a preschooler, also a family physician who cares for many more Sioux Falls families, Sioux Falls School District families. Since the last school board meeting, the COVID situation in our state has continued to evolve, and we need to evolve along with it. Daily new cases have tripled since the board met two weeks ago and are higher than they were at this time last year. As we look to start a new school year with this more contagious Delta variant widely circulating in the area, we're just in a worse spot than we were a year ago. So in a classroom of 25 unvaccinated, unmasked children, one infected person could be expected to infect five to nine additional people compared to an expectation of two to three last year. So a small number of cases initially in this school year could potentially explode, shutting down classrooms and schools entirely. Vaccines are available for adults and children 12 and older, and I would encourage them. I do encourage them all day long. But there aren't any vaccines available currently for our elementary age students. And statewide, no more than a third of middle and high schoolers have actually gotten these vaccines. We are far from herd immunity. This is not enough to stop the spread. We need masks. We need them required or expected as they were last year for all students, staff, and visitors, just like the CDC and the AAP recommend. This is an educational institution that teaches science to its students. In science, we make observations about what our surroundings are, and as our surroundings change, then we need to change with them. So it's time to follow the science and the public health recommendations and provide the safest possible educational environment for our students. Last year's policy worked to keep cases down. Kids in school, masks should be the expectation. I've been a parent to a child in peds intensive care, and it's not an experience I care to ever repeat. About one in 50 kids with Delta variant COVID will be hospitalized. At my kid's school, that means two or three kids per grade level. I mean, is that okay with us? So there was a model from North Carolina State that showed in an average elementary school setting with no masks, 90% of students would be infected in 60 days. That's, like I said, two to three kids per grade level on my kid's school before Halloween. We don't have that capacity in our hospital. Please, please, please require or expect masks at all grade levels. These illnesses and hospitalization are preventable. I don't want any other parent to have to experience what we did. We did a good job last year, and we can do it again.
Thank you. Last, Chad Bishop.
First point of order. Under the person's wishing to address the school board, it says the speaker is limited to five minutes regardless of the number of subjects the person wishes to cover. If multiple individuals sign up to speak on the same topic, total testimony on the topic shall be limited to 15 minutes per side of the issue as determined by the president.
Yeah, and it's non-agenda items that were on that agenda, and you also put on yours Continue to Learn Plan, which is also in the realm of masks in the school. So that falls in the same category.
Okay. And I'll skip the first two topics. You'll have a copy of those in your inbox.
Thank you.
Sorry. With respect to Continue to Learn, on this topic, I must once again stress I claim no credentials or special training. I'm synthesizing the information I offer here. Oh, wait, you want my name? Chad Bishop, 7405 South Valencia Drive, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And I will say, my wife and I are eager and thankful that we're about to be back in the classroom for our 10th calendar year as all-city parents with our three girls. That's 17 years' worth of commitment time, every minute treasured. So on this topic, I am synthesizing the information I offer here as accurately, incredibly, as I can. The references mentioned should be in your inboxes. I realize it is more contentious than other topics, but just as important. I reserve the right to be wrong. I would note that the words vaccine or vaccination appear 38 times in your Continue to Learn Plan. This is both appropriate and responsible, given your obligations. I acknowledge that your plan does not require vaccination for either students or staff. However, there are several points in the plan where children and staff who are not vaccinated are encouraged to behave differently than their peers. We all know, while you are not requesting vaccination status records, kids talk, this information will be discussed in the school. Acknowledging this, I would respectfully ask that you add an additional category of COVID-19 recovered. This would be understood as someone who was diagnosed with a positive RT-PCR assay and/or IgG antibody test, or perhaps even an adaptive T-cell response assay. One can credibly argue that they should be considered immunologically equivalent as a vaccine or a vaccinated person. It follows that your policy should treat it as such. The rebuttal to this point is often that we don't know how long immunity lasts. My counter would be to offer the article referenced, published July 14th of the year, in the journal Cell. The credible article states, "Most Recovered COVID-19 Patients Mount Broad Durable Immunity After Infection." "Neutralizing Antibodies Show Bi-phasic Decay With Half-Lives Over 200 Days." That's the extent, length of the study. It will go longer. "Spike IgG Memory B Cells Increase and Persist Post-Infection. Durable Polyfunctional CD4 and CD8 T-cells recognize distinct viral epitope regions." In addition to these conclusions, please consider that those of us who have recovered from COVID-19 likely have an often omitted immunological advantage. This would be the presence of IgA antibodies in the mucosal layer of our lungs and respiratory system. As referenced, Wall Street Journal finally brought this up this week. The referenced NIH and frontiers of immunology references effectively describe why this layer of immunity... Thank you. Why this layer of immunity... why this layer of immunity is not conferred upon those who receive an intramuscular injection of the current vaccines on offer here in the U.S. This is not to say I'm anti-vax. This is just to acknowledge what natural immunity is. Again, I respectfully request that you update your Continue to Learn policy to reflect these facts. Should you decline, I would respectfully request that you quantify the decision. I share your goals of making the Sioux Falls School District the best district in the country. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration in these matters. As always, I'd be happy to remain after and chat with these topics at your convenience. In addition, I would like to offer that you put forth and support proposals to do serological antibody surveys statewide so that we can learn how many of our population are actually immune. Thank you.
Thank you, Chen. Thank you all for public input. We take this seriously, as well as all the emails, phone calls we all have received as a board. As we said on August 9th, when we did vote to adopt the plan, that we will take into consideration changes that happen in our community, in our schools, and so forth, as we go forward. This is going to be a fluid plan. And also know that we are encouraging masks for those who are not, at this time, vaccinated-- that's the language, Chad-- but that we are encouraging that for our families, and we're hoping that that's a choice that they make if their doctors and their families choose to do so. So, thank you very much for everyone. Okay. Any other comments on public input? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Onto the Good News Report.
Responsive here for me or not? Okay. Good evening. As you spoke at your board retreat, August 9th, along with the board meeting as well, you had extensive discussions on our district priorities and our focus on continuous improvement. And two of our priority areas are staff excellence and well-being. So, Community Relations Team went to work to develop a new and enhanced recognition program for staff who work tirelessly to improve the educational environment for our students and for their fellow coworkers. Dr. Sabum actually recognized a popular video series made famous by our own Ben Schumacher, who does our Staff Stars videos. She suggested building upon that series with awards to recognize staff members who go above and beyond. In our why statement, as we were creating this project, we said, "The Sioux Falls School District Star Award shine a light on staff who deserve recognition for the role they play in helping SFSD be the best school district in the nation. The district believes that if staff feel appreciated and their work is valued in the greater community, they will aspire to give even more of themselves to the profession and the students they are so passionate about." So, this year, we are launching two additional types of recognition. We have some in-building recognitions that we'll be doing. That is the Blazing Star Award. A staff member who rises above and completes a routine task with great care in a timely manner, does something extraordinary to help out. These cards will be available in the buildings, and we encourage staff to write a quick note and give it to another staff member. It's kind of the equivalent of a high-five, a shout-out, something like that. You know, oftentimes, our teachers will give an award, you know, "Hey, I saw that act of kindness, that random act of kindness that you did in the hall by picking up that garbage." This is something similar, Blazing Star Award, to just say, "Hey, someone recognized what you did and how you went above and beyond." So, we'll be sending those postcards out to buildings this week, and they should arrive there after our school mail folks do all the distribution. Further, we have created an option for a Rock Star Award for principals. Some of our principals already have recognition programs in their buildings. So, this is not to say they absolutely have to do the Rock Star Award, but if they don't have something, we wanted to have a tool for them to be able to recognize staff also. So, this would be for a staff member who continuously displays that can-do attitude, that positive outlook, always, you know, at the front of the line, willing to help, that type of thing. And so, the building principal will be able to select that person, either however often they'd like, whether that be weekly, quarterly, and then provide some additional little incentive that is popular in that particular building. We know that at elementary, the incentives might be a little different than they would be at the high school level. So, we wanted to allow some autonomy for that. And then, district-wide, we are going to have the All-Star Award. And that award is for a staff member that's veteran or new, who has embraced the mission, vision, and values of the Sioux Falls School District with excellence and professionalism. This is a staff member who leaves their mark without fanfare, sort of the unsung hero, the person you'd like to clone if you could due to attitude, efficiency, reliability. This person really looks for ways to improve school environment without being asked. And so, those who are nominated then would receive a special surprise and star awards. So, of course, you have to go with the star balloon, which we're all out of helium right now, but we'll get that replaced just shortly. So, they'll get a helium balloon along with, of course, some star bursts, right? Those who've been named All-Stars will be entered into a drawing for a one-month membership to Silver Star Car Wash. We approached this fast-growing business because their name fits so well with our awards, and they were really eager to come alongside of us and really showcase those staff members who go above and beyond. And word has it on the street that this will be delivered by someone special sitting at the right-hand side of the board table today. So, we look forward to going out with these awards and making surprise visits, capturing a photo with the person who is receiving it, and really using that to recognize those who consistently go above and beyond. So, this information is going out to our staff tonight in district dialogue, and tomorrow, it will be available as we want our community to participate in the All-Star Award as well and tell us who they believe should be nominated for an All-Star Award. So, any questions?
I just think anytime we can remind people positive things they've done because we all hear about all the negative things we do in our world. So, it's great to do that, and we have so many positive things going in the district. So, thank you for--
Yeah, I look forward to seeing how it all plays out. I know we have a lot of great All-Stars, Rock Stars, and Blazing Stars out there.
Thank you, Deanne. There were no new conflicts of interest presented, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, items 9A through H. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, items 9A through H, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto the supplemental consent agenda. 10A, Claims to Sanford Health, 1 and 2. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That carries with one abstention from Board Member Ryder. Onto approval of claims to Vera Health System, 10B, 1. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries with one abstention from Board Member Parker. Onto the reports of the superintendent, 11A, Professional Development Update.
And tonight, we are welcoming Sarah Claussen. Sarah is new to her role this year, but not new to our district. Sarah is going to be overseeing all of our professional learning as well as our language services. And I think it is supremely unfair that we are making her start with this report because it is a whopper of a report, which is really great because there have been a lot of really good things going on, a lot of good feedback on some trainings that were brand-new. So, Sarah, we are looking forward to hearing your report, and welcome to your new position this year.
Thank you. I did ask if they're always this long because it's six pages of things that we've done, and I'm so excited to be able to report to you all of the wonderful things we've done. And I have also gotten some really good feedback on them. So, as Dr. Sabum mentioned last week, the district priority, one of them is staff excellence. So, I get to tell you some of the few things that we've done in the summer and this last week in that area. We offered development opportunities for each of these areas. We have 3,600 employees. So, making sure that everybody has the tools they need to be able to do their job well is why we have a six-page report. I'm going to highlight just a few of those things and not give you every single one. In the summer, we offered opportunities for teachers and leaders to learn more about blended learning as an option for their high school classes. Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol is a framework for teachers to be able to support their English learners in their classroom. Social and emotional learning, a topic we've all needed to know more about in the last two years especially. We offered some MTSS, some multi-tiered systems of support opportunities, to really give our leaders a guide for how we do this now in the Sioux Falls School District. And then, another group that we are working towards being able to support well is our Native American students. Administrators, admin interns, and instructional coaches receive training in how to have a crucial conversation, special ed in their buildings. Again, SIOP as a way to support our EL students, leadership training and giving effective feedback, and social-emotional health. Things really ramped up. Last week, on August 16th, we welcomed 219 new teachers to our school district. 79 of those are brand-new to teaching. So, we're extremely excited to be able to support them in the Sioux Falls School District as they grow in their profession. They were in the very capable hands of our coordinators and instructional coaches. They learned more about how wonderful our district is, how our system works, and some of the instructional and curriculum things they will need to be able to start the year well. We all know that clerical and our EAs do some of the front-facing hard work with our students. So, we gave them some tools, be able to do their job well, and support students in the classroom as well. In early childhood, elementary, and gifted, you'll see a really strong emphasis on literacy and making that literacy collaborative and giving teachers the tools they need in order to really build that literacy instruction in their classroom and making that interactive. In the secondary world, you'll see another focus on interaction and really making the classroom an engaging place to be through Kagan, Schoogee, building some culture within their classroom. SIOP, again, for both levels in order to support their English learners. World Language is starting a study, so they had a special speaker come and talk to them about the importance of language. Each of these groups had training in their area. Many of them had training from nationally-known speakers or agencies to just give them a really good idea of what's out there, give them the support they need in that area. Lots of nationals. This year, we had two additional days, which was a gift to us. So, in the secondary world, we were able to bring in Kagan. It is, again, classroom instruction, but interactive. This is just a little picture. I was able to go sit in on multiple sessions, and this is pretty accurate to what I saw. Teachers talking to each other, feeling safe with each other, and learning how to create that space in their classroom as well. And then, elementary teachers also had some professional development in the area of literacy in order to make that really come to fruition in their classrooms and interactive. And then, last week ended with just a treat. I know many of our leaders in the school district worked with Avera to create this conference. We brought in Lynn Lyons, who is a nationally-known speaker. She works specifically in the area of anxiety and depression and really gave us some tools, not just the what, but also the how to support students and staff in the area of anxiety and depression. I think I can speak to many of us. We've heard so many positive comments about the summer, this last week, this week already, Monday, I heard some good things from what happened out at Jefferson today. So, I just wanted to share a few quotes, some highlights from the week related to the Avera Conference. I heard, "It's so refreshing to hear about ways we can support our students with their mental health. As a teacher, I've witnessed a plethora of mental health needs over the years, but I have felt inadequate in my support for students. Now, I feel like I have more ways to help." As for the Kagan and other trainings, I heard I have taken part in many trainings in my education career, and the Kagan training was among the very best and most immediately useful I've been able to take a part in. And these are just a few from teachers, but we've heard positive things from counselors and school psychs and elementary teachers as well. But the one that I think just ties the bow right on the top was this week has felt like I was able to go to an educational conference, and that was just what we offered through the school district. Any questions?
Well, you are right. This is longer because when I read the report this weekend, I went back to past reports on the district website, and I just feel like many of these are much more targeted towards the staff and where they are. So, I'm hopeful that we will see that it's much more useful for them, and it's great to hear those comments on them. So, thank you for kind of changing things up. And I know last year is a little different because we couldn't probably have these meetings and so forth and so forth. But it's great that they were able to partake in these because I do think if we're going to continue to change and evolve and move forward, we have to make sure that our staff is getting educated in all of these resources and be able to help them with what they need to address in our school. So, thank you very much.
I'd just say, I'm especially appreciative of the mental health aspect of it, I think, especially after the last 18 months or so, what not just our students, but our families and our community have experienced, that it's important for our teachers and all of our staff to be able to help each other and also feel like they have tools that they can support students maybe in different ways than they've either been able to or even needed to in the past. And so, we've heard from many parents, and we've heard from community members in the past about what are we doing for mental health. And I know this is, you know, only a three-hour session, and there's much more work that could be done. But it's a great start and a great way to hit as many people as we did to be able to send them out, and hopefully, they can now comfortably have conversations with each other as peers, maybe sharing a student that they have or maybe sharing a coworker that they have that they're trying to support as well. So, a great first big step to take, and I look forward to, I'm sure we'll see lots more, you know, smaller, whether it's workshops or videos or articles or whatever that will be shared to support everybody on a continuing basis. So--
Do you have a motion to acknowledge the report and the professional development update?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of acknowledgement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. It is acknowledged. Thank you very much. Great job for this report. Onto post-secondary.
Good evening. Second report tonight is the post-secondary enrollment of the district graduates. Tonight, I'm here to share information on our post-secondary records of enrollment for our graduates from 2013 through 2020. District priority area, it falls under academic success, and the Bureau of Labor and Statistics-- District priority area, it falls under academic success, and the Bureau of Labor and Statistics predicts 65% of all jobs will require post-secondary education, with the fastest-growing fields in computer programming, healthcare professions, and support, community service, and these occupations require high levels of post-secondary education. Employers will be looking for workplace complexities, communication, teamwork, customer service, leadership, problem-solving, and complex thinking. For most jobs, securing high school education will not be enough to qualify for these jobs. So this chart here indicates that some form of post-secondary education beyond that bachelor's or bachelor's degree or beyond will be required for entry-level jobs. And the information I'm sharing tonight comes from the National Clearinghouse, and they did say they saw an increase in people securing or going back to, for a master's or beyond degree last year while, during COVID-19. The data that we're sharing, again, comes from the National Clearinghouse and enables schools and districts to access the largest provider of electronic student records, exchanges what represents more than 3,600 post-secondary institutions, enrolling 98% of all students in the public and private institutions. Participating institutions provide access to the actual enrollment and degree information for each of their students. As a result, the Clearinghouse can only offer FERPA-compliant access to the nationwide coverage of these enrollments. So students have to agree to have their information shared, so that disaggregation of the numbers doesn't actually match our graduates, because they have to give us that information. Also, it doesn't include any of our students that go on to the military. Chart B here shows, let me back up. Chart B here shows the percentage of 2020 district graduates enrolled in post-secondary institution the fall immediately after high school, and that was 55%. Realizing the impact of COVID-19 pandemic on that post-secondary enrollment, the eight-year trend from 2012 to 2019, the percentage of district graduate enrollment stayed flat, knowing that there was a slight decrease there due to the pandemic, but then our out-of-district institutions, there was a decrease also. And again, the National Clearinghouse shared information, the impact of COVID-19 pandemic's impact on post-secondary enrollment was reported by the National Clearinghouse. Spring 2021 undergraduate enrollment was down 5.9% compared to the spring of 2020. The traditional college-age students, age 18 to 20, saw the largest decline of all age groups at a negative 7.2%. And as you can see, Sioux Falls was down 4%. So our students went at a higher rate than nationally. This chart here shows the top 10 schools reporting initial enrollments. So this is a comprehensive list of the top 25 most frequently-attended institutions of the Sioux Falls School District students. And so they take that data from 2013 on through 2020, and that's where most of our kids go. So USD and SDSU are right there on top, and then Southeast Tech at third. Chart D illustrates the district graduates continue to preserve, pursue post-secondary enrollment over time due to delayed entrance. They'll, the first two years, so that blue line there shows the first two years that they go with, within that first time, or the orange lines, the fall immediately after. So they might not go that first year, but they get in there that second year. And chart E shows post-secondary enrollment. Students continue to progress towards graduation. So you can see our purple follows those students along till graduation at 49.2%. And then when we see our new-to-college, the green, those are your freshmen on 2013, 14, we get a few more in 14, 15, a few more each year that go over to that graduation in the 19, 20 school year. And then we have that persisted, that orange bar right across the middle. And then we get a few that come back after they stopped out. So that tiny blue, blue line there, we have a few students that after they've been, they've enrolled, and then they left and came back. So, again, district graduates continue to pursue enrollment in post-secondary institutions over time due to delayed entrance, a 67% overall average at any time during the first two years after high school from 2013 through 2020. Most jobs require applicants to have post-secondary education and training behind, beyond high school. Employers will continue to look for those cognitive skills such as active listening, ability to communicate, critical thinking, that make post-secondary education a necessary requirement. Therefore, post-secondary enrollment data will continue to be retrieved and analyzed on an annual basis to monitor district graduates. I'll stand by for any questions.
Think this is great information, and what I'm hopeful, one of the things that we changed going forward this year is when we added Jefferson, we maintained the same level of counselors at our high schools, existing high schools, then, and then added the new ones out at Jefferson, so that they will have more time and ability to help all the students with issues and so forth, so we can try to help those students get the rates up if, if they truly want to go to post-secondary school. So that's one of our goals as a district to do, whether that's, you know, technical school or college, if they want to do that, we want to make sure we have the resources to help them to get to that level, and that was one of the ways we did that with our budget going forward.
I would just add a continued focus on our dual-credit classes. Lots of research has shown that those who take dual-credit classes in high school are more likely to continue on and be successful in post-secondary. So again, whether that's technical school or university. And I think that that is also a huge financial benefit to our families too. So I know we got emails this year, since I have a senior, that we are offering new classes that they can take at our high schools, and I think that's awesome, because that takes away some of those barriers for our students who maybe otherwise want to have been able to get to another location. And so however we can continue to remove those barriers to help them to, you know, whether they go to one of these places that we're looking at as our top 13, or whether they choose somewhere else, as long as we can set them up to be successful and help them financially by getting them some of that credit and confidence in high school to help them continue, will help them to be ready for those jobs and careers that do require that additional education and experience. So I think we're doing what we can. Obviously, there's always more to be done, but I would encourage parents and students to kind of seek out some of those options as well, to learn more and talk to your counselors and, and see, you know, your freshman year, it's not too late to ask those questions. Just because you're in high school, that's a great time to get more information and find your path. So interesting to see where our students end up, though.
It is.
And the school counseling websites of each of the schools have lots of information for post-secondary school for families and students to help.
And it is in our district priorities, so really that visible pathways for families and students. We'll continue to grow that.
Any other comments? Seeing none, do you have a motion to acknowledge the post-secondary report?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is acknowledged. Thank you, Dr. Boyce. Onto the 2021 staffing update. Becky?
All right, good evening. Several hundred new employees will join our team, bringing their best to our schools this fall. It's an exciting time. We're wrapping up our teacher hiring, and we're shifting to filling our remaining support staff, and then, of course, our substitute teacher roles. The report this evening provides information concerning the district's new staff, vacancies still out there, and some characteristics about our candidate pool. So we are going to learn about the teachers we've hired, what kind of experience they're bringing to us, and where they're coming from. We'll take a look at diversity, remaining vacancies, resignations, where did teachers go? And then our support staff, and then what we're going to do for recruitment. Although I'm the one to deliver the report tonight, I'm certainly not the one that did all the work, okay? So I have to acknowledge our human resources team. We have a fine team, all with their areas of expertise that contributed to all the work that we discuss in tonight's report. Okay, as we heard earlier tonight, we hired 219 teachers, and that was as of this week, or this past week. We're still working on a couple, which I'll get into in a little bit. However, in the previous five years, we averaged 141 hires. So we're significantly higher this year, and you can see the different levels where our staff were hired, the highest being at the elementary level. And there's a look at where we had been in the previous five years. So you can see, we felt the pinch about mid-June. We're like, holy cow, something's going on here! And, and sure enough, we ended up higher than we've ever been. Reasons for that, of course, opening two new schools in one year will do that, as well as we have a lot of SIPS reading teachers, some recovery FTE that we were able to hire. And then our, in the past, our other year of note of 189 staff was due to an increase in special education caseload and great growth at the elementary level. Looking at teacher education and experience, just over one-third, actually 36%, of the teachers that we hired this year are new to the profession. That's a little bit lower. We're usually closer to the 50% mark. Approximately 63% have less than five years of teaching experience. Looking at the little chart, you can see this is the most experienced group we've hired in a while, as well as the most educated. And I will touch on the whys to that in just a little bit. This is probably my most exciting slide, so I had to put the dancing person on there. Looking at promoting from within, this is a great deal of pride, because we have a lot of people that take jobs in the Sioux Falls School District to get their foot in the door. And you can see here, we did a nice job of promoting those with the skills to be teachers to actual teaching positions this year. Now let's take a look at our out-of-state teachers, those that came outside the walls of our schools and outside of our state. That moving van represents those people that probably had some packing to do to come here. That was pretty exciting, that one-third of our staff came from other states. This is also part of the reason why our staff that we hired this year had more experience and more education, because a lot of these teachers had experience and education with them. And we have to include, we hired several speech-language pathologists, which was a goal of ours, and they came to us with significant experience. So let's take a look at our South Dakota hires. A close look at these hires with previous experience, so I'm just looking at those that came with previous experience, showed that very few of them came from borders or districts that border us. We attracted many teachers from local businesses and entities. Some of these folks were returning to teaching, maybe they had left for a while, but now they're coming back. And then we also polled for our CTE programs. We polled from businesses, which is outstanding. This also accounts for our growth in alternative certification. We went from approximately 12 alternatively-certified new staff last year to 24 this year. The district prioritizes a work environment and organizational culture to foster employee motivation, engagement, and belonging with a focus on hiring a more diverse staff. Fall 2021 welcomed a 13.3% ethnically diverse teachers within our group of 219 new teachers. District-wide, 4.8% of teaching staff are ethnically diverse. And then we have a nice comparison of where we've been over the past couple of years and our, our growth in this area. We still have a few vacancies remaining. Our administrators are continuing to interview candidates for these positions, or they've made some schedule changes and staffing arrangements to make sure that our classrooms will be covered come Thursday. If we remove the retirements, so think of that when we're looking at this slide, we're removing the retirements, we're going to take, took a closer look at teacher resignations. The Human Resources Department does conduct an anonymous exit survey for all staff that leave. However, the participation rests at about 30%. So to collect more reliable data, HR followed up on the resignations for teachers to find out where they were going, and if possible, why they were leaving. And so this is the outcome of that additional research. In addition to the 219 teachers, the district has also hired, to this point, 115 education assistants, specialists, and clerical. And if you were to look on our district website right now, we have needs for some, a large pool of support staff, so that would be more education assistants and specialists, 30 custodians, 12 coaches, six food service workers, and of course, about 250 substitute teachers. With substitute teachers, though, we, we are off to a great start. I am the person that reviews substitute teacher applicants, and I am so impressed with our community members in this group who are making time to help schools by being a substitute teacher. So it's been really fun to look at those applications. As with most large employers, social media and targeted online messages and videos are our greatest recruitment tools. Our applicant tracking system revealed that, other than the district website as the number-one most popular recruitment tool, referrals from staff are popular, and then also Indeed.com. The competitive hiring climate in southeastern South Dakota necessitated the addition of a recruitment and retention specialist in the Human Resources Department, which we added late this summer. So that's one of the recruitment highlights on this slide. In addition to hiring a recruitment and retention specialist, Dr. Stavum and I did a new teacher listening session this past spring. The information that we glean from that type of interview with new teaching staff will shape how we move forward. One thing that might be great this year for our HR department, hopefully, we don't have to, to wait till, till spring to have it. We'd like to have these conversations sooner while their experience is still fresh in their mind. And then we also offered a hiring bonus for special education teachers later this summer when we received some late resignations. We knew that it was going to be difficult to draw out some applicants, and that seemed to be pretty effective for us. These are the, the new things that we did this year. On top of our billboards, our multiple online job postings, we did job fairs, held special interview nights, offered contracts to outstanding student teachers, and did virtual interviewing at the convenience of the candidates, so that they could participate and get to build relationships with our principals. This year, 167 candidates applied for district teaching positions. And South Dakota was home to about 65% of this pool. And then, looking a little broader, 80% were from the Midwest. And our candidate pool averaged about seven years of teaching experience, and that's held pretty consistent over the past four years. years of teaching experience and that's held pretty consistent over the past four years. Now let's take a look at our applications over time. After a three-year hold the district sustained a nineteen percent decrease in our applicants for the twenty-one twenty-two school year and then if we look a little bit further down on the slide compared to four years ago our applications have decreased by thirty-five percent. Now although an applicant pool of nearly seven hundred seems like it may be robust these applicants pursue opportunities with other districts that border us and across the Midwest. During the twenty-one twenty-two hiring season the district did experience thirty-nine rejections to contract offers compared to fifteen rejections the year prior and twelve the year before that so this chart just kind of lays that out that would give us you know with thirty-nine rejections that is an acceptance rate of about eighty-two percent so if you look at the people standing on top of my little chart that is a good representation of what it would look like if you offered ten contracts two of them would turn us down let's just hope that they weren't physics teachers or band teachers. The decline in the twenty-one twenty-two acceptance rate and overall decrease in the number of applications the district is experiencing must be monitored very closely to determining to determine if this is a staffing trend like we're hearing from across the nation or if this is something that has to do with COVID and us bouncing back one thing that I did think about with with staff leaving we had very few people leave us in the spring of twenty I don't think people were moving they were they were staying put so we are seeing some of that increase this year it was almost like a doubling up so we'll have to see if where those trends play out something that we have to watch. Now our work ahead our work ahead relies on our competitive compensation focusing on our district priorities we have things laid out very nicely for staff and professional development and so we just need to continue to work those focus on those and of course innovative recruitment to attract the best to our district. Does anyone have any questions?
I really appreciate you following up with people who didn't maybe respond to the anonymous survey because I think any of that information is helpful for us as a district and what we can possibly change or what might need to be addressed so we can retain because we all know that the cost of hiring new people is exacerbates over time if we can retain and keep the people in-house that are well-trained it makes it much easier for us to go forward so thank you for doing that because I think it is good information for us to have.
Any other comments? Seeing none do I have a motion to acknowledge the two thousand twenty-one recruitment and staffing report?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign that is acknowledged thank you Becky. Final report. Todd, please.
We started to work on the FY twenty-one budget almost two years ago in November of two thousand nineteen when the board approved the budget timelines and guidelines and we had several meetings on it in between now and then or then and now and today is the second to last report you'll get on the FY twenty-one budget the final will be the audit from RSM sometime in December. So we know as we always do at this meeting we look at our tax-supported funds that those are the general fund the capital outlay and the special education fund this is the last time you'll see the pension fund on here because that was eliminated several years ago and we've been getting it down to zero and now we've got it down to zero and this is the last time you'll see that and then the bond redemption fund so we're going to look at the revenues first we budgeted one hundred eighty-nine point five million dollars in the general fund we actually came in at one hundred ninety point seven so one point three million to the good capital outlay we came in at eight point three million to the good in revenues of course a lot of this is being driven by the COVID funding special ed one point one million to the good and bond redemption just about ninety-nine thousand under that's just a matter of the timing on property taxes because that's a hundred percent property taxes except for a small bit of interest that we're earning on that On the expenditures you always want the revenues to come in over a hundred percent and you want the expenditures to come in under a hundred percent that's a good year so on the expenditures we came in four point seven million to the good in the general fund seven point six million in capital outlay in sped we were two point five million to the goods so all those were fairly low compared to budgeted and bond redemption is about right on the money there so the net the net actual so when you add up the where we came in versus what we budgeted we budgeted fund balance of six spending into the fund balance of six hundred and four thousand in the general fund we actually increased it by five point four capital outlay we're going to spend into it by two point six we actually increased it by thirteen point three and that once again has to do mostly with that COVID revenue driving a lot of that sped oh and a settlement with an unexpected settlement with the federal government and on universal service fund E-rate that we've been fighting with for about three years we got that money finally came in so thirteen point three there four million to the good in sped and bond redemption one point we actually had came in at just nine ninety-four thousand under what we projected in the in the. All right sorry the bond redemption. Just take a I just I'll run through this. Where are you at with our fund balances so obviously we did well in the general fund our fund balance is now up from seventeen million dollars up to twenty point eight that's eleven point two percent if you recall and I'm sure everybody does because it was so exciting when we went through our five-year plan when we were doing the budget back in March and early April we had estimated that would be at twenty-seven million dollars right now so even though it went up we had said it was going to go up higher I'll get to why it didn't in a second but that's because we've got to build in these we have to grow our fund balance now because we're building in out-year COVID expenditures that aren't going to go away so we can't we always say you know you want to be around eight and a half percent five years from now but you don't want to be there dropping from twenty percent down to eight point five in one year so we're going to have to coast that out so that's why we have a planned planned increase in the in the fund balance now it's not as high as we thought but then let's look at the capital outlay fund we're trying to balance where those expenditures are going to be in the capital outlay fund the general fund we didn't we didn't show when we did the capital outlay plan in 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 March and early April we didn't show an increase in that we just had it eleven point seven it's actually at twenty twenty point three because we put more money into the capital outlay fund than we had anticipated so if you add the two together it's we had anticipated thirty-eight point seven million now we're at about forty-one point one so we actually did better and most of that is that settlement on that with the E-rate funding that we hadn't hadn't received for a few years and we just had to work out an issue with the with the FCC sped we did really well in sped as you saw earlier so their fund balance is fifteen point two it had been really low the past five years it had been under five percent then crept up a little bit the maximum amount you can have in that capital outlay or that sped fund is twenty-five percent so we're nowhere near that that maximum but it's nice to get that built back up a little bit because they're they're going to deal with the same thing we've added expenditures and eventually the money that's funding some of those expenditures are going to run out so we've got to to glide into that that number pension fund last time we'll see it we last year received in some money as the as the pension fund was going away now it's been eliminated so nothing no change in the pension fund and the bond redemption fund it's in the negative we've been we've been building up to getting that positively funded ever since we did that thirteen cent levy when we first passed passed the bond back in two thousand eighteen and then we also refinanced the GO bond to pay down the we split it into two we did one hundred and thirty-five million dollar bond we're going to do a fifty-five million dollar bond sometime this fiscal year we were going to pay off the first one faster because interest rates are still so positive so we did a refinancing in May to take advantage of those while they were still there and then we'll do this last one but that refinancing affected this a little bit here and we'll get it where it's at zero or slightly above zero into the future so that is kind of just a brief look at where we are with our tax-supported funds we'll have the audit in December and I guess our our recommendation is that you acknowledge the report on the district's FY twenty-one budget wrap-up and I stand by for questions.
Thank you Todd and just to reiterate what you said with both the general and special ed is through our ESTR funds and additional federal funds we have hired more staff given pay increases that that we don't want to spend it all at once because we'll have a cliff because we don't want to have to terminate staff and do those things so that's why it's a fine balance of spending it but yet having enough so that we can continue it on after the funds dry out.
That's exactly right when we're building it up now and now we know we're going to coast down and hopefully hit that eight and a half percent which is our five-year target hit that thing and be flattening out so we're not we're not crashing right below that number.
And with capital outlay we have two new buildings that we have to maintain that we're going to have in the future as well as with Whittier coming on board at some time.
Yeah we have to have the capital outlay fund strong because we have a plan to build Whittier but that was not that buying buying land to be able to place it somewhere was in this plan and funded but the funding of Whittier is not in it so we have to have a decent amount in the capital outlay fund when the bond dollars run out so that we can afford to do what we're planning to for the next five and second five years.
Any other questions? Seeing none do I have a motion to acknowledge the two thousand twenty-one budget wrap-up?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign that is approved. Thursday classes resume for the district so be driving carefully watching for students walking and other families going to school and look forward to the school year starting so thank you for all being here and being engaged anything else for the good that if not do I have a motion to move into executive session for SDCL one twenty-five dash two print four.
Second.
Have a motion in second we are moved into executive session.